Welcome all invited guests to this meeting. The order of elected official, I see our Sheriff, Derek Gollidge. I see Mayor Doris Davy of Harum. As I look over, do I see any, are there any other elected officials? If not, thank y'all for being here. I am not David Austin. David had to leave this morning at nine thirty. His wife Jane fell and called him and that's all we know. So he went home to check on her. I don't know anything else to say. At this, I'd like to ask you to cut off all phone, pager, net sales, whatever, electronic devices that you have that would beep and make noise and interrupt our production. I'm going to dispense with the reading of the ordinance on public participation. Today for our invocation and pledge, we have Pastor John Cox of East Hamilton Church of the National. John, and did I even come close to pronouncing your name?
You were close.
Okay, but now if we're going to apologize to everybody is I probably won't pronounce your name right and there'll be some words that I probably won't say right, but I do that for y'all to play the game. John, that is true. Stand with me if you're ready.
Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Our precious Holy Father, we take you, Lord, for the opportunity that we have, Lord, to come together as men and women to discuss business of this county. Lord, we pray, Lord, that you will just be with us today, Lord. I pray, Lord, that you will help us to understand the biblical meaning of leadership, not to lord it over people, but to be servants, Lord. Help us all, Lord, to be more serving in our community, help others that are less fortunate that need the help, Lord. I pray, Lord, for our Commissioner's wife, Lord, that fell today. Lord, we pray that your hand will be upon her, just touch her body and bring her strength and let there be no major problems, Lord. We pray that you will just keep her in your care, Lord. We thank you, Lord, for this opportunity and we ask all this in the name of Jesus for there's no other one worthy. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The April 22nd work session minutes and April 22nd board meeting minutes are available for your review. Are there any questions or comments about that? All right, under announcements, I'd like for you to talk from my proclamation for food allergy awareness. And it's been presented to Karen Harris with Food Allergy Kids of Atlanta. Karen, if you would come forward. And let me read the proclamation and I think you want to say a few words? Is that correct?
I've got it.
Okay, all right. Whereas food allergies can be threatening, food allergies are increasingly prevalent and affect approximately fifteen million Americans, including six million children. And whereas there is no cure for food allergies, strict avoidance is the only way to prevent a food allergy reaction. Anaphylaxis is a serious allergic reaction that is rapid in onset and requires immediate medical treatment, including an injection of epiphrin and treatment in a hospital emergency room. If not treated promptly, anaphylaxis can be fatal. And whereas eight food accounts, whereas eight food account of ninety percent of all allergic reactions, milk, eggs, peanuts, tree nuts, wheat, soy, fish and shellfish, and even small amounts of food allergen can cause a reaction. And whereas eating away from home can pose a significant risk to people affected by food allergies. Research suggests that close to half of fatal food allergy reactions are triggered by food served by a restaurant or other food service establishment. And whereas approximately twenty to twenty-five percent of epiphrin administered in schools involve individuals whose allergy was unknown at the time of the reaction. And more than fifteen percent of school-aged children with food allergies have had a reaction in school. Georgia has passed stop epiphrin laws that permit an emergency supply of epiphrin auto-injections to be used in a school. And whereas Food Allergy Kids of Atlanta is dedicated to educating the general public, schools and restaurants in Georgia and communities about life-threatening allergy reaction risk management procedures and how to enact an emergency action plan. Now, therefore be it resolved that I, David A. Austin, Chairman of the Pauling Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim May eleventh to the seventeenth, twenty fourteen, as Food Allergy Awareness Week in Pauling County and encourage all citizens to become aware of the dangers of food allergies and how to successfully manage food allergies to promote a safer, healthier community. Did you read that again, please? Last step to the podium and feel free for everybody to get a picture like that.
Is the back of Chala here?
Is Betha Chala here? If you would come up too.
Here.
Right.
Where do you want me?
Up here?
Where'd you say, here?
I know.
Do you like them? Is that your word?
Perfect, thank you.
I'm Betha Chala and I was just going to say real quickly, I appreciate all the hard work Karen has done and worked with us. We have Epi pens at every single school here in the county and in field houses in case at a public like football event or something like that, that those are available should anyone have an allergic reaction. And we're very proud of the work and the knowledge that we have and are working towards making sure that no child ever has, you know, a bad reaction that isn't covered. So, thank you.
Well, first I have to come clean, I'm actually not Karen Harris. I'm here on behalf of Karen Harris. I'm actually Mary Kirkman and I live here in Pauling County. So my daughter Olivia Kirkman goes to W.C. Avney Elementary School. And because of Beth, and I apologize, because of Beth, we have Epi pens in all of our schools. And if you've ever had to get an Epi pen, they're very expensive, especially if you don't have insurance. And it took one email to get these pens in every school. And she did it in less than a week. So I just really, as a parent, thank you so much. And I apologize, my daughter's had three Epi pen injections in her short life, so very emotional topic. But I want to thank Pauling County because we are actually one of only a handful of counties in the state of Georgia that has stock epiphrin. And I really do appreciate Beth's work on that. And I do thank all of our administrators and our government and the lack of us to do that. So, thanks very much.
Thank you. Next, the Board of Commissioners would like to present Lupus Awareness Month Proclamation to Kim Schofield, which I don't believe she is here, with the Lupus Foundation of America and the Jordan Chapter, and to Patty Pacer and Kim Burrow with the Dallas Diamonds Lupus Support Group. So if y'all would come forward. And I will read the proclamation. And then I think one of y'all wants to say something. Lupus Awareness Month, whereas each year the Lupus Foundation of America designates May's National Lupus Awareness Month to show support for the estimated 1.5 million Americans who have lupus. And whereas lupus is an unpredictable and misunderstood autoimmune disease that ravages different parts of the body. It is difficult to diagnose, hard to live with, and a challenge to treat. And whereas lupus can affect any part of the body, including skin, lungs, heart, kidneys and brain, no organ is spared. The disease can cause seizures, strokes, heart attacks, miscarriages and organ failures. And whereas lupus can be particularly difficult to diagnose because its symptoms are similar to those of many other illnesses and major gaps exist in understanding the causes and consequences of lupus. More than half of all people with lupus take four or more years and visit three or more doctors before obtaining a correct diagnosis. And whereas while lupus strikes mostly women of childbearing age, no one is safe from lupus. African-Americans, Hispanic Latinos, Asians and Native Americans are two to three times more likely to develop lupus, a disparity that remains unexplained. Now, therefore, I, David A. Austin, Chairman of the Pauling County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim the month of May as Lupus Awareness Month throughout Pauling County and urge citizens to observe this month by educating themselves on the symptoms and impact of lupus and to join with the Lupus Foundation of America in supporting programs of research, education and community service. Thank you. If I gotta get my picture right, do you gotta?
That's right, not wish out.
Stand over like you think you like it. And if one of you would like to step to the podium at the same time? Okay, if you both would, that's fine, babe.
I want to begin by thanking the Chairman and the rest of the board for issuing this proclamation. I am proud to be a part of a family who has been called Pauling County Home for many generations. My name is Patty Dobbins Pacer, by the way. As a facilitator of Georgia's newest Lupus Support Group, it is our goal to provide education and bring awareness to this cruel illness. I had lupus since 2006, but because I had no idea what it was, I put off pursuing treatment from a rheumatologist. It wasn't until 2009 when my treatment began and educating myself about lupus. Thanks to the Lupus Foundation, we all can learn to cope with this loss of our quality of life. Life is a daily struggle for all of us and the Dallas Diamonds Support Group hopes to reach as many people as possible who have been affected. May is Lupus Awareness Month, so we bring awareness by wearing the color purple. And then if you would like additional information, we do have pamphlets in the back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Kim Peo. We do have a Lupus Support Group here in Dallas, Georgia. It's over there at Bethany Church on sixty-one. It's the second Saturday of the month at twelve o'clock. And I would advise you to call because sometimes we do have a closed holiday or something's happened that we can't make it. Lupus, as you just heard, is a bad disease. It overlaps so many things. When you look at Patty and I, you can't tell we have lupus. If I told you I suffered a stroke, if I suffered a seizure, if I had a mild heart attack, you would be shocked because I look like I'm well. And that's the day for us. We get up wondering how you're going to feel that day, what kind of clothes we have to put on, what kind of shoes to be wearing. Do we wear the flip on? Can we tie our shoelaces? Back in the way when I suffered all those, I had to quit my job. I was a massage therapist, licensed massage therapist. And I was starting a business and it was going off really well. I couldn't stand or sit for an hour or any longer, so I had to go for disability. Disability fights us because they say, well, you have two arms and two legs. Yes, we do, but you don't know how we feel when we get up in the morning and we can't walk across the floor. So I just wanted to make y'all aware. And anybody is welcome to attend our Lupus Meeting Group. It is free and we share our stories and we let people know what's happened to us in our lives. So, thank y'all very much. Have a good day.
Next on the agenda, I think David won that one, so say what.
Yeah, this is something I'd like to add. There's something that we've been looking at, brought up a couple of months ago. I've talked to Sheriff Gollidge, spoke to Chief Hurwood, spoke to Assistant Chief Salfrey this morning. Brian has pulled information for me on this. Something I'd like to say has had something to the Chairman's budget, which comes out due first is the State Pension Fund. We have, all of us have spoken about this, but Brian has pulled the numbers for me on this. And currently we have a hundred fifty-nine Sheriff's Office deputies, seventy-two detention, six marshals. And in Fire Department, we have a hundred and thirty-five firemen here in the county. And with this State Pension Fund, it's nothing on the county. This is, this is a State Pension Fund. What I'm wanting to do is pay their dues for them each month. That is a twenty dollars for Sheriff's Office per deputy and twenty-five dollars for a fireman. And what this will cost the county in total monthly for the year will be ninety-seven thousand dollars, six hundred and twenty dollars. I'd like to add this to the Chairman's budget if it comes in June first. I couldn't touch the speaker. I've spoken to Mr. Austin, I've spoken to Mr. Jones about this, so everybody's okay. I know we're not taking the vote that much and everybody kind of aware now that Brian has been in this course and also I give that to you guys.
Okay. Do you have any comments on that? There are invited guests, there are none, bid awards, there are none, under reports from committees and departments, Michael Justice concerning Veterans Park and White Oak Park.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My apologies for the scratchy, really stuffy notes, but thank you for allowing me the opportunity. It's a busy time for parks and recreation. If we can, I'd like to start and go over White Oak Park very quickly. There's a meeting being held as we speak at the park that will confirm completion of that. That project's been going on since the fall and we have lost rental opportunities there, but it is about to be complete. There are a few things in-house that we need to do from this point, but we are nearing the opening of, the reopening of some facilities there within that park set. So I'm sure we'll just do a little bit longer if we can and we'll have that going again. It consists of a couple of pavilion additions and renovations in the old and some painting of the parking lot. All that is complete with a few touch-ups I considered in the address.
And which that added, it took and added another closed area or enclosed area.
We added two additional outdoor facilities in addition to that. There should be more opportunities there now for group functions, whether they be inside or out. As far as the Veterans Park, thank you guys for allowing us to proceed with that way back in the fall. It was officially dedicated and opened this past Saturday morning. The estimates are between five and six hundred people that attended that. The weather was great to us. It didn't rain on us until we left, you know, and everybody was on their way home. If you weren't there, I hope you have an opportunity to get out and visit that facility. It's a little bit different than anything we've ever done. So it's very nice and it fits this facility very well, I think, both of them. You know, if you've got a facility such as this, then it needs to look nice out there. And I think it does that now. So thank you for your support there. As always, when we do these types of projects, we have to have a ton of help from everybody. Local departments, DOT, Marshal, Fire, Sheriff, Kevin Kirby and the Pauling Chamber of Commerce. The school system was involved with the vans and the local kids in the ROTC. I sound like a granny speech, you know, I'll forgive somebody, I'm sure, but a host of people, you know, to pull that one off on Saturday. Numerous veterans that were able to attend and I'm sure thankful for that and thankful for the opportunity. We have to honor those folks as well. Both of these projects should be pointed out as lost projects. And none of the development of the Parks and Recreation can happen. That is our sole source for development, whether it be improvements, existing parks or development of new ones entirely. That is our, that is our avenue to get that done. So we're thankful for that as well. The next big event, Friday and Saturday Relay for Life will be out here. So if you haven't had the opportunity, there's another one coming. It is officially open. Now, we're going to point out that there is a little bit of construction activity that's still happening. None that should affect your visit to the park at all. Some irrigation issues, some minor touch-up issues, that sort of thing that is there. So please, when you get the opportunity, step outside, enjoy that newest park addition. Just for clarification, Red Trail, you know, the Red Trail is point five zero miles exactly. So if you're one of those that needs to keep up with the mileage that you're walking, point five miles on the Red Trail, if you cut through some of those green ones and make it smaller, haven't figured that one out yet. If you do the outside loop, it's exactly a half mile. Thank you for your support, you know, with those projects. Thank you all for attending and also have Daddy and your continued support for what it is we try to do through Parks and Recreation.
Of course, one of the things about that park, it is a beautiful park, but it actually honors our veterans, those that served and those that gave the ultimate price of giving their lives, which were honored there. And so there's an emblem for each branch of the military, which is under what I would call the gazebo out there. You know, and it's a place to remember that in our country, freedom is not for.
Just driving in this morning, I saw several couples using the Red Trail. Just did my heart good and so much feedback from, well, quite a bit of feedback from just since Saturday from the veterans on how much they enjoyed that. And the staffs sitting across the front here, I just couldn't tell you enough what a great job you did. I know Chuck here, he's kind of the ramrod for getting it completed on time and even financial director Tabitha was out there participating. And like you said, I'll leave people out, but y'all just did well, good job and so appreciative.
Chuck, Grant, Mike Jones, special thanks, you know, from me personally to those two guys. They're a wonderful asset for me to get to work with those guys and get that done.
And the rain fell though.
Rain was good. It was close, we got it.
Mike Jones and Tom Leonard read off the names of the folks that are no longer with us and that was, that was a neat little moment, very touching moment. Y'all did a great job.
Okay. Thank you. Next on the agenda, the consent, discuss action, file consent agenda items, consent agenda items. First one is action authorize the county to enter into a purchase contract and execute all related documentation for the purchase of two point eight acres consisting of a portion of tax partial number one oh eight three oh for the purpose of acquiring property of Pauling County Water System from Scorpion Real Estate Company five for a hundred and twenty-four thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars and sixty cents. Property lies immediately to the west of the county's Macklin Road itself. Do you want to make any additional comments on this?
I would like to point out that we were able to negotiate below what you authorized us and we saved two dollars and forty cents.
All right, item two is to appoint Katie Noblet, Charlene Ursery. And you kept telling, mispronouncing it. Charlene Ursery, Susan Israel to the Pauling County Library Board trustees with a beginning term in July first, twenty fourteen and ending in June thirtieth. And these nominations come from the Library Board and which were required or asked for approval. Item three is to appoint Jim McMittson to the Board of Elections to fill an unexpired term of Eddie Fincher with a term dating beginning May twelfth and ending June thirtieth, twenty fifteen. Item four is to adopt a resolution fourteen dash thirteen to form an affirming the appointment of Ben Amerson to the Pauling County Board of Assessors. Now, we approved Ben to serve, to renew his term beginning January first, twenty fourteen, back on December tenth, but it's a requirement of the Department of Revenue that all members be appointed in the form of resolution. So this is a resolution to take care of that appointment. And then subdivision streets accepted for perpetual maintenance, which there is an attached list. They do not, they said I do not have to read it. These lists come as a recommendation from the IPF. Have any questions about any of these items or would you like to move any of them to regular business? If not, we'll move on. Old business, there is none. Under new business, discuss action to adopt resolution fourteen dash four, amend in section two dash five, Michael Pauling Code of Ordinance reporting regarding the Order of Business at Board of Commissioners meetings and two dash sixty-one regarding public participation of Jason Felton.
Commissioners, at the last meeting, y'all had asked that I drafted a resolution that would create an opportunity for citizens to comment on agenda items and that that opportunity occur prior to your discussing those matters as the agenda moves forward. In resolution fourteen dash twelve, you'll see that proposal. And to give you a little bit more detail in the big picture, what will happen is that for instance, if this were, if this had been approved for the purposes of today's agenda, following Michael Justice's report from Parks Direct, we would then enter into a period that will be newly entitled, Public Participation on Agenda Items. The way the process will work is this, if it's an agenda item, there will be a requirement that the speaker registers to speak on that item. Registration period will open ten minutes prior to commencement of the meeting. So today would open at nine fifty. And the sign up would close once the meeting is called to order. When you register, you indicate which consent, old business or new business items you want to speak on. You write down your name and you write down your address. And then once the meeting's called to order, the marshal, who will be in charge of maintaining that registration form, will have that form brought up so that when we reach the point of meeting for public participation on agenda items, the chairman will call the name of each speaker and the speaker will then have five minutes to speak on whatever agenda item that they have indicated they want to speak on. The advantage here is really twofold. It gives y'all the opportunity to receive comment during the meeting in which the agenda items are going to be considered. And two, it allows the citizens who are, basically gives them the opportunity to review an agenda from the time it's first published up until the time the meeting is called to order, if they'd like to speak on one of those agenda items. So that is the section entitled, Public Participation on Agenda Items. At the end of the meeting, as we have traditionally been done, there will also be public participation on non-agenda items. The registration requirements for speaking on non-agenda items will continue as they have been, make the request to the county, to the clerk's office, no later than five o'clock on the Friday preceding the meeting. So, just in sum, we've got two public participation sections, one for agenda items right toward the beginning of the meeting and one on non-agenda items toward the end of the meeting. Both of these opportunities will occur, one will occur at the work session and one will occur at the regular session. Some more details in there that I'll be happy to address if y'all have any questions.
One thing I'd like to say changed is in section two dash sixty-one, item one A, it says that a speaker must be a Pauling County resident. I like to see that say that it should be a Pauling County resident or property owner because there are many times that the board takes action that affects property owners here and since they do own property, I believe they should have the right to speak on items.
I agree with that as one on the list of mine. If you do have property owners, if something could affect them, they, they could need to be able to hear from them. I know other counties do and I think that's great. So we could commend that, that would be wonderful.
Any others?
I think it's great. I think it's a long time coming. A lot of other counties do it. I myself have been in office for three years.
I myself have been in office for three years and five months. It's something that I've wanted to see for the last 10 years, to be honest, so I'm excited about it.
Okay. I'll have that... One question, of course, that's what I was hunting for. It's actually in two sections. One is in section one, which is on agenda items, and the other is in section two, non-agenda items. So I assume there's no one changing on both.
Right.
Okay. Now, in retrospect, now I don't know if we actually checked this, so that means that if you're not a property owner and you're not a resident, you're not allowed to speak, correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right, well, I mean, in these two items, according to this ordinance, if you're not a citizen and you're not a property owner, you're not allowed to address the board under the, I mean, the board can invite anybody they want, but you're not covered, because this is for citizens and taxpayers, it's the goal of this project. And I know I'm a pothead of a can of worms, but it is what it says. And it's always said that, whether we've always applied that.
I don't know if it has anybody in that.
Covering up it?
So...
Okay. All right, if you will make the...
I'll have those revisions for you this afternoon.
Okay. Item two, discuss action to enter into a professional services agreement for rate and financial analysis and business plans for the Richmond Reservoir Project for Raphaelis, or Financial Consultants, and I'm sure I didn't pronounce that right, in the amount of $219,395, and that's being presented by Mike Jones.
You're close, Raffelis.
As long as we send him a check, then I'm careful.
That'll pass, I'm sure. This contract was born out of necessity. We have, we've entered into a period with the state GFA folks regarding state direct investment in our project, which we're very happy to have. This, one of the deliverables under this contract will be to assist the state and Pollock County with determining just how much state investment we can expect on this project. There are actually six deliverables, and I'd like to read those to you. One is capital financing, that deals with the financing of the project, including any gap that would remain, the bulk of the financing is in place, and maybe all of the financing in place, but the design is not complete yet. The project delivery, which determines how the project will actually be constructed, how you contract with the engineers, how you contract with the contractors, GCs, and so forth. There's an economic analysis and revenue projection for this project. There's an economic forecasting model that we've developed specifically for this project, and we will use that model during the entire construction phase of the project. And then there's a wholesale service comparison, which will take a look at what the cost is to produce water out of this project compared to what we're purchasing water for, as we currently do from Cobbier Water Authority. Do a blending and see which one of those, how much water should we produce, how much water should we purchase. And lastly, and I think probably one of the most important at the outset, is stakeholder communication. There will be a website developed. I suspect that we will have an overall program manager, not a project manager, but a program manager. This project is huge. It really consists of four or five projects, depending on how you want to split it up. And the public participation portion of this thing will provide all of the information that you want to know about this project, how much money's been spent today, when is the construction going to start, which components are being constructed at this particular time, who's building them, when is there an agenda item coming up for this. Anything you want to know about the project will be available as part of this. That's just one component of stakeholder communication. There will be lots and lots of community meeting sales once the permit is issued and we get started. If you would permit me, I would like to go through just a real short update on where we stand with that, I know that's of interest to many.
Okay. Then I'll ask my question.
Okay, maybe I'll have the questions for you. Let's see, the state direct investment I spoke about earlier, we have already been selected to receive, we're one of three projects that were approved last year to receive a portion of just under $40 million. We don't know what the dollar amount is, that's part of what this is going to do. There's an additional $18.5 million added in the 2014 budget, but again, we don't know how much of that we will be receiving from the state in the form of investment. In 2012, we received $29.1 million from GFA in the form of a low-interest loan. In 2013, we received another $21.6, and 2014, we've applied for $25 million, and we stand to find out what we will receive, and I believe that'll be August when they'll announce that. So in terms of funding, we're in very good shape. I would characterize the three most important things that we needed to get done in the last 18 months, which would precipitate the signing of the 404, which I believe is imminent, was an approval of the stream bank mitigation plan, an update of our water needs analysis from the Georgia EPD, and then the ACT, which stands for Alabama CUSA-Talakusa Basin Cumulative Impacts Analysis. All three Georgia reservoir projects were required to be routed with a hydraulic model to show what the impacts will be on this basin just above Mobile Bay. As I explained to you the last time we met, no one was surprised when we had almost no impact, and when I say almost no impact, that's what I mean, .07 percent. It's not even within the accuracy of the model that predicted it, but the model did skew out a number. Our impact is 16.6 CFS. What does that mean in terms of water flow?
Yeah.
Well, that's a drainage ditch that's flowing pretty full after a rain event on a basin that has 22,000 CFS. That's the Chattahoochee River on its worst day times 10. That has a comparative analysis, it's insignificant. We met with Colonel Tichner, the commander of the Savannah District late, actually it was early this year, I believe, January, Commissioner Barnett, David Austin, myself, Michael Carter, and the EPD Director were there, and what came of that was what is very important to this process. Colonel Tichner suggested, you know, one of the problems we had had was the Mobile District communicating with the Savannah District, and his suggestion was that we have one meeting to reveal the results of this impact analysis in Atlanta at the division level. That meeting has been requested by our Water Systems Director, Michael Carter, and we expect that meeting to occur in July. The state EPD has signed off on our needs analysis, and that mitigation plan has now been accepted by the Corps. That came late last week, I think it was Thursday or Friday last week, we finally got the notification. We are in excellent, excellent shape. The EP, the U.S. Corps of Engineers, the Savannah District is currently preparing our environmental assessment, that's the last stop. So I'm excited to tell you the good things are on their way. I don't know when we will start construction or land acquisition, those sort of things, but I will tell you, it's really close. I cannot wait to bring you the pen bronzed from the signing of that 404 permit. This permitting process is intense, it's expensive, it takes a long time, and I've been working on this project since 1998, and I cannot wait to see it start.
Just a couple of things. One, I guess to put in English what we're doing, of course, the reservoir was voted on by the citizens, I believe, in, like, '98 or '99?
It was April of 1999.
Okay. And you say that we have been awarded these loans, but we actually, we've been approved the loans, but we haven't borrowed the money. Only thing we have borrowed is within that, what is it, $2 or $3 million line of credit, in essence, that we have to fund all of these studies, correct?
$2.8 million was awarded to us for the preliminary engineering and these studies. This agenda item that you have here will be funded through that dollar amount, and you're correct. Though those loans have been awarded to us, we have not drawn them down, they're the good kind of loan. They're zero-interest loans until you start actually using the money.
Right. And now, what this does is it makes sure that the citizens of Pollock County water system, by producing water and not paying Cobbier Yetta financially, can make the pay, so that it's not tacked on to water rates and that type of thing. You're having, even though Michael's done the study, this is a third party that I believe was recommended by GFA to do this study, to actually make sure that we can pay for it. And part of this process is that they will disclose through this website the information that we presentations made, I think up to two presentations by this company that I can't pronounce, to the Board of Commissioners of what they're doing. In essence, the one big thing is that we're ensuring that this won't turn out like the fiasco of the airport, and from a public relations standpoint, that the public will be involved and will know all along what's going on.
Yes. Yes, you're right, that was correct. I would say that the meetings that we're referring to, we're not just talking about two meetings by this company. This deliverable will set up the stakeholder communication going forward, but they will give you a presentation, give you more details about what we can expect. I've said many times that the airport situation, the poster child, for how not to communicate with the public. This is a very popular project, it was voted on by over 75% of the public, it's been a long time coming. Pollock County will, for the first time in its history, be self-sufficient for water delivery, and we want to make sure that the citizens who are ultimately going to be funding this, who are not coming tax dollars, who are out for ratepayers, are protected and they understand what's going on.
Okay. And then this will be delivered and complete by September, and that was their resolution, correct?
That's correct.
I've got a couple of questions, not necessarily about the resolution, but probably answers to the citizens and myself. After we get everything completed, how long does construction take? When can we start enjoying it?
For your more technical question, I'm going to turn that over to Michael Carter, he's been more involved with the engineers on the details of the project, I let him respond to that.
Mike just does the good stuff.
As far as the design goes, we're, you know, a year and a half into the preliminary design, that's coming to a close now. We still have to do final design of the project. That's another year roundabout work, and then it's going to, you know, start construction. I look to start construction sometime late next year, it's just going to start building out pieces of this rock, and then it'll take about three years to construct the project, and then an additional year to fit it. So you look in 2018, 2019 range to where Pollock County actually starts using water from the Red Lake.
Sheriff Village, can you last that long?
No, it didn't. That took me a while.
Is there ever a possibility that we would sell market to Harrelson or Polk?
Well, right now, we already sell water to Polk County for a small section close to Doorville. Those needs are not a part of the project as it stands right now, it is for Pollock County.
And this is based...
We still will maintain connections with Cobbier Yetta for redundancies and things like that, so if we have issues, we have other mechanisms and opportunities to help out.
Last question for Mike, confirmation. When you talk about state investment, is that something we don't have to pay back?
I've been cautious to be careful about how I answer to that question. The answer to your question is yes. So the dollars that the state chooses to invest in our project is of a regional nature. The less water that Pollock County consumes coming out of Altoona is a regional benefit, and part of this study puts a dollar amount on what that regional benefit is. So yes, the state will invest dollars into this project because there is a regional benefit, and every dollar that they place in this project is a dollar that Pollock County ratepayers will not be paying back.
Any other questions?
I'd like to just make a couple of comments. It's, one, I'd like to thank Mike Jones and Michael Carter and everybody else that's participated in the work for the reservoir. So I thank you, and it has been a long road, and Mike, you're right, and I know there's a lot of folks that are going to be glad that we get that permit. It's hard for me to sit here and listen to some of it, Tommy kind of opened the door, but in '99, we did vote for the reservoir, and everything that we've done's pretty much been out in the open. In '99, we did not vote for the airport, and everything that's been done's been behind closed doors. It's very hard for me to sit here and listen to that comment, because it has been a PR nightmare, something that's divided this county, that was not what I planned to speak on today at all. But when you opened that door, Tommy, I appreciate it. Didn't want to plan, I know it came out, sometimes it does, but in '99, we voted for the reservoir, and also '99, the same people that voted on the reservoir to fund it, to do it, to build it, voted against that airport. Although we've done things, Michael, out in the open on the reservoir, and I thank you for the effort and the work that y'all've done, and it's something that the citizens will be glad to see. It's very heartbreaking for me to sit here today and see that we voted against the airport, we got it, and then what's been done to this, to the citizens of this county with trying to push the commercialization of the airport, and as far as I'm concerned, behind closed doors and two-day retreats. And it's very heartbreaking to me. There's actually maybe a person or two in here that actually voted that they didn't even know, didn't even know that the citizens had voted against the airport back in '99, and I think we need to do their due diligence. I don't think there's anything that we should be doing in our county that's going to be negative against any of the citizens like that, and if we're going to break the promises that were made, we need to do it out in the open, and we need to come before the citizens and let the citizens know what we're planning to do. And I hope that we've all learned a big lesson in this. I don't blame the citizens for fighting the way they have fought. I will continue to fight, but it's, some people think it's easy, it's not easy to stand up here alone. It's very emotional for myself and my wife, and there's not any reason that we should be doing what we're doing to the citizens of the county. When things are good and things are done right, you'll be blessed. When you do things wrong, you have things that are going on in this county like they're going on right now, that divide friendships, divide families, divide citizens, divide Board of Commissioners, and I wish that we had some people in the Airport Authority, in the IBA, the Board of Commissioners, that would decide once and for all, if we're going to stand up, we're going to do the right things for the citizens of Pollock County. I'll go ahead and stop talking. I appreciate this time, I appreciate the opportunity to serve each and every one of you, and I promise you, I will continue to do my best.
Any other questions or comments? Item three, discuss action to authorize Chairman to enter into a contract with Heath and Lineback Engineers Incorporated in the amount of $154,818.62 for the design services for Hillcrute Parkway Multi-Use Trail Project Phase One, Erica Parrish.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Erica Parrish, I'm the Reconstruction Manager for Pollock County Department of Transportation, and I will be the project manager of the project if it gets through. Improvements to Hillcrute Parkway are on several projects that we're working on to provide better access to the Silver Comet Trail. Presently, the Silver Comet Trail is not accessible to Hillcrute Parkway, and this project will provide key connection as well as a connection back to the Willstart facilities. We are recommending approval of the design contract with Heath and Lineback Engineers. This firm was selected after a process involving an invitation for a request for proposals, proposals which were distributed to different offices. A selection committee made up of three departments, which were Community Development, Parks and Rec, and DOT, reviewed these proposals and unanimously selected...
Remember, all of you voted for her.
We did, we all voted for her, and we felt like that was the best candidate. Since that point, we've had Heath and Lineback working on a concept, and we believe we have a very good concept, and we are asking them to forward with the design. And with your approval, we'd like to ask you to, one, this is our contract with Heath and Lineback Engineers, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Of course, this trail is wholly in my district, so I'll ask you a few questions. Number one, in reading this, I assume we're going to put a bridge over the Silver Comet Trail and...
We are looking at two options, we're looking at two options. We're looking at two options. Either widening the existing bridges there around Fort Worth or we could do a total pedestrian bridge there. Studying the cost comparisons right now. It looks like it would be a tad cheaper to widen the bridge, but we are studying that.
Why don't we, I mean, I know the design has people coming from one side. I mean, why not come down and get on the trail on this side and come down and get on the trail on this side? Why a bridge?
We are looking at connectivity. We want to let them just keep people here though on Bill Creek Parkway. The project that was just awarded for the Bill Creek widening would tie all, we're going to tie the trails together, connect people all the way from the Willstark side down to Regency Park. We're going to add a ramp down to the Silver Comet Trail and actually cross over the bridge on the lower side. We just feel like that's a, to build the two ramp downs would be fairly expensive and we feel like just do an alternative or do a ladder and then bring in the one ramp down. We kind of watched and that's just alternative. We thought we'd get a solution.
Okay. Of course, this will connect everything in that area.
It will.
I mean, there's stuff on the, this is on the right side of the road if you're going toward ninety-two that, what about, in the proposal, it talks about signaling, studying that. I mean, how are you going to get people from the other side, like from the Hiram High School?
At Hiram High School, there will be a signal. So there will be a pedestrian crosswalk to bring people over across Bill Creek Parkway and Regency Park and they could hitchhike on the new trail. However, at Grace Con Connector, Tom, you know, there are no signals proposed right now. We'll monitor that and watch signals for pedestrians having what's wanted. We monitor and install facilities at that time to bring people across. But right now, there's just, without the signal, I don't know if we're going to install a cement block crosswalk. But it will be studied.
Okay. Now, other question is the, of course, you're with DOT and this is Splotch money, but this is Parks and Rec. So this is Michael Justice's money and I assume Parks and Rec is on board with all this?
That's correct.
And who actually served on the committee?
It was Michael Justice, Anne Littman, and myself.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. All right, at this time, this is the conclusion of regular business under executive session. There is none, but I'll say one thing. You may.
Okay. I had sent an email to the chairman and to you guys earlier last night, it was last minute email, and I told them, and I said, and also to Jason Phillips and Michael Jones, that I'd like to go into executive session for litigation. Got just a couple of questions I need to ask you all. What I'm asking now is if maybe we could put that on the agenda for us? If we could have six or eight minutes in executive session this afternoon at two o'clock meeting, I'm asking you guys if you would allow me to do that, put it on the agenda for this afternoon. I hate to ask that without the chairman.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion if we go into executive session this afternoon at two o'clock. I've got two questions that I'd like to ask and I would, I would, I would still be trying to ask.
That'd be on the agenda. Is that proper, Michael?
I'd like to put it on the agenda for the two o'clock meeting if that would be okay. I'm asking you guys.
To tell you, for clarity's sake, I think that if there's going to be an executive session, it need to be at this meeting. We're going to vote on going into executive session. It would be coming out of this meeting, which is currently in session, and doing it now as opposed to voting to do something in the future if it didn't be... I have followed the trail of emails on that request. The chairman, Austin, had asked Commissioner Farnell and put his questions to you, Jason.
Commissioner Farnell and I discussed it and I think that his intention right now is to bring it to y'all's attention to see whether y'all want to go into executive session now. Commissioner Farnell, if you would like to do it this afternoon, you're certainly free to move to do that at the Saturday news meeting.
I mean, you make a motion whether...
And the public can wait because it won't take long, but I'd like to make a motion that we go into executive session for four or five minutes. I've got two questions to ask the commissioners.
Okay. We got a motion to go into executive?
I'd like to have Mr. Mike Jones and Michael Carter with us, please.
And this, just to clarify, this is for purposes of litigation.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I would like for Chairman Austin to be able to be in the meeting so we could see what his status is and see what his availability is before we vote.
That's probably going to be difficult. I mean, I understand, but...
If there's a litigation issue at the county, I'll obviously be there.
Okay. All right, looks like I don't have a second. I appreciate it.
Okay. Next on the agenda, citizens wishing to speak, Ms. Sharon Stevens, real of the airport. You can come forward and I will state your name and you have five minutes to make your presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for listening to me today. I'm Sharon Stevens. I live in the overlooked subdivision, which is two miles east of the airport. Moved up here in 2004, March of 2004, with my husband. He was very ill. I have a son that lived in Taylor Farm. He'd been here for years, wanted us near, so he found this cute little subdivision. A year or so after that, one of my neighbors said, "Did you know they're going to build an airport about two miles from here?" I went immediately in my house, laid on my bed and cried because I'd been through this before. We lived in Fairburn, which is south of the airport, from 1978 to 1986. When we first moved there, the airport had two runways, the Atlanta Airport had two runways. My husband actually worked for the airlines, gave us a good living at the time. Then they added on, they expanded. It became impossible for us to even have a cookout and I was fifteen miles or so from the airport. The traffic, the air traffic became constant instead of just having a push in the mornings and the afternoons. We left there in 1986 when my son graduated from high school and moved down to the Lumen area. That was home to us for seventeen years. The noise, the pollution, the quality of life that we experienced in Fairburn went from a dream that we would live there forever to couldn't wait to get out of there. My car actually had to be repainted due to the pollution at the airport. If you don't believe that, go and look at the vegetation around the airport now that was put in for the Olympics and it's all dying. We have a beautiful forest over here. It won't happen overnight, but I'd say within fifty-six years, that forest will be gone because of the pollution that you're trying to push on us. I have family that lives in Clayton County. They moved there probably fifty years ago. Ford was big in that area. It was a beautiful bedroom community. Look at it now, men. What's up there? There's nothing there but people who make low income, who can't even keep their schools accredited. People want to move out, they don't want to move in, and they can't sell their homes if they have had them for a while. I know that because I have families still there who are stuck there. Now, we've had magazines, articles written about this county in the past that it's the most desirable place to live in the United States, right? One of the most desirable places. I will tell you that we're going to have articles written about us in the future that's going to say, "Paulding, what happened to you?" It's going to be another headline. It's going to say, "From Best to Worst." The jobs that you're talking about creating here are going to be low-income, entry-level jobs. They're going to be mostly maids, janitors, there's going to be food service, there'll be a few technical jobs. When my husband first went for his job, Atlanta had a huge room full of folks doing load planning, which means that tell them how to load the planes. Every hub had a same setup. Then the computer in Iroquois, they condensed everything to Atlanta in one room about like this. And by the time he left in 2001 and retired, there were probably fifteen people doing what hundreds had done before. You're not going to have that many technical jobs out of the situation of that. Now, some of you, I know, have dollar signs in your eyes. You're thinking there's going to be lots of money made over there. Some of you may even think that you're going to get some of it and I hope you do if this goes forward. But for those of us who are left here who put all their 401Ks in a house, which we did, thinking that someday we might retire and live better as we got older, let me tell you this, you're ruining us. This airport will ruin this county. I have lived through it. Don't think that you're doing something for my grandchildren. I lost my husband in November of 2013. Seven months later, I lost my only child that we had moved up here for with a stroke, leaving me with three little grandchildren. My whole life is devoted to them. They have lived here all their lives. This is all they know. I'm an interloper, as some of you might call, because I'm new here, but my grandchildren are Paulding County's, countyans, however you want to say it. This is their home. They're going to have to leave here. They're going to have to leave here to have any quality of life. It won't happen overnight, but I'm sixty-five and I've seen it in my lifetime. I've seen the Atlanta Airport take away subdivisions after subdivisions. I've seen, you might as well put some money away because you're going to be having to buy overlook and mirror all the subdivisions between there. It's happened in Atlanta at the airport up there. They've had to buy up Pauls subdivisions.
You're getting your kind of...
Thank you. I appreciate your time, but don't be exhausted. Don't spend your birthright. Don't sell out your birthright in this county. Payed in for a fix, a little fix. You've got it in your hands to do the right thing and expanding that airport and commercializing it is not the right thing for me, for my grandchildren, for all your parents and for all your pains. It's not the right thing. Look in your heart. Don't be exhausted. Thanks very much. My heart.
Next, we have Ms. Chris Byrom speaking on the Richling Creek Reservoir.
I just fixed my speech.
That's how you rush by when you're driving. Okay. I need you. Here you did confuse me. I'm your man.
Before I start, I just want to say she was speaking right from my own heart. Thank you. Thank you for letting me speak this morning and I appreciate the time. I have been following the development of the reservoir project for some time now and have some concerns and questions concerning expenditures on that project. On today's agenda is $219,395 for professional services to determine rates and a business plan. At the February 25th board meeting, Michael Carter stood before you asking for $488,039 for preliminary engineering fees to Arcadis and another $81,000 to RLH for permitting and engineering. During this meeting, Carter indicated that weathered rock, which is cracked rock, existed down to a hundred feet below the surface and conditions at the dam site were discovered to be very different from what they thought and that site composition was not suitable for construction of a core of an earthen dam. Additionally, Mr. Carter has noted saying that onsite materials were not available for the construction of the core of the dam and the feasibility of alternate construction options were being explored. I'm glad to hear today that more information is forthcoming on this project, but questions still have come to my mind and over taxpayers in this county and they include: Has adequate due diligence been performed on the site prior to purchase to determine if the site was conducive to building a reservoir? How much money was spent on the permitting process before we had to start the process over under this administration? And just why did the permitting have to be restarted under this administration? Why has it taken this long to determine the issues Mr. Carter outlined in the February board meeting concerning the site? Now that issues concerning the site feasibility have been raised, I would like to know if this administration is 100% certain that alternate construction methods to mitigate site conditions will work before proceeding forward with expenditures such as rate analysis and business planning. Mr. Carter also mentioned that work was underway for pipelines, but again, is it wise to be spending money continuing this phase of the project until it's certain that this site is feasible? This is the one project that most, if not all, Paulding County residents are in favor of and in light of recent disclosures at the February board meeting and the lack of publicly available information and updates since that time, I would like answers to my questions and assurance that my taxes are being spent in a prudent manner and not as if they were manna from heaven. Thank you.
And of course, two of your questions, one being what due diligence was done before it was purchased. Of course, I know that no one up here can answer that because none of us were here because it was actually purchased in ninety-nine. And I assume that there was several studies before that time. As far as why the permit had to be restarted, again, no one up here was here prior to that and what the board of commissioners previously spent their time and energy on from January 2000 until December 31st, 2008, I don't know that they spent a lot of time and energy on the reservoir, so, but, you know. Next item is Ms. Candy Go, and speaking on citizen participation.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Gentlemen, I have a prepared speech, but you've addressed several issues on citizen participation already this morning, so I'm going to say something that you very rarely hear as elected representatives. Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. But since you didn't address everything I would like, I'm going to read it anyway. As a talk show host, blogger, an advocate for our most precious rights, our First Amendment rights, citizen participation is a topic that is near and dear to my heart. You see, it's the right of the people to petition our government for redress of grievances that I consider to be the most integral part of what makes our constitutional republic so incredibly awesome. It was the failure of King George and the English Parliament to allow such freedom. That is why we have the country we have today. The colonists didn't automatically just one night say, "We're going to take up arms and go to war with England." It was after many years of petitioning King George and the English Parliament for representation within their government that they finally said, "We're not getting any relief and we're going to pick up our arms now and we're going to declare independence." At the last board of commissioners meeting, I sat with my daughter right back there and we listened to some very excellent ideas put forth by Commissioners Graham and Powell. I actually got very excited and discussed with my daughter later in the afternoon why the subject of citizen participation was so important. I stressed to her how elected officials too often forget that they are there to represent the constituents and how they too often forget to listen to our concerns and our thoughts. We discussed, my daughter and I, how government is of the people, by the people, and for the people. the people, and that it is Lincoln's words that remind us of how important our voice in government is. Having spoken to almost, almost all of the candidates running for local office, I asked them the following questions in interviews. These are questions that I heard from, from my listeners and my readers. Would you support lengthening the time between releasing the agenda and the next meeting and when residents can sign up to speak? You took care of that today. Again, thank you. Would you support changing the time meetings are held so that those of us who hold jobs don't have to take off for work and would find it easier to attend these meetings? Would you support putting off voting on non-immediate items on the same day? Would you allow for two weeks before voting on these items so that residents have a chance to speak to you, one-on-one, via email, via social media, telephone, whatever it takes? They want to understand the issues. And last, would you support holding a monthly town, town hall style meeting that would allow citizens the opportunity to address issues the board has not yet taken up? Every candidate for local office I have spoken to have agreed that these are good ideas, and again, some of these were addressed this morning. Another important item to be addressed would be releasing the text of resolutions that you are discussing action on taking. A prime example of that would be today's meeting, Resolution 14-12. It would have been very helpful to me speaking on this important subject had I been able to see the resolution ahead of time. Had I done that, I wouldn't be making this speech now. I would just have gotten up and said, "Thank you. I appreciate very much what you've done." Not all of us want to stand here and beat you up every time you come together. Some of us want to pat you on the back when you do something good because that's just as important as holding you accountable. Gentlemen, since the airport kerfuffle began last fall, I have heard time and time again how the citizens were left out of this discussion, and to a certain extent, they were. And I am certainly not here to discuss that. My point is simply that a lot of the vitriol on both sides could have been avoided had the citizens felt they had more of a voice in local government. So while I thank you from the bottom of my heart for addressing some of these issues, I ask you now to seriously consider not taking votes on the same day. I ask you to consider holding monthly meetings so that citizens can bring to you their issues, and I ask you to consider posting the text of resolutions before taking action. Gentlemen, thank you again from the bottom of my heart for addressing the very important subject of citizen participation. God bless you.
Thank you. At this, this is all of our regular business. At this time, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn?
Got a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All votes in favor. Blake, you may number saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion, adjourned. We are adjourned.